But I knew she would be here really soon.
Good morning.
All right, I'm out of sorts today and I got a little bit of cough, so I'm sorry. If I start, you know, coughing too much, I'll just leave someone else running this meeting. We have an opportunity to say thank you to a person and then also express our appreciation to another. So I'm glad to see my old buddy back there. Vic, how are you doing today?
Very well, sir.
Good. So I just have kind of a cryptic note here, but it looks like maybe your sentence for serving on the RLF has been completed.
That's what they tell me.
Well, tell us a little bit about that. I mean, you know what the RLF is and I certainly do as well. Some folks may not. What have you been doing there, buddy?
The revolving loan fund is a how long I've been on the board?
Nine years. We call that some hair ago.
The revolving loan fund has changed over nine years. How many dollars that basically help businesses that they need a little extra for financing or a bank doesn't want to finance. A revolving loan fund can come in and sort of fill that gap spot. During COVID, the revolving loan fund had dollars available for small businesses to help them. And it's for me, it's been part of this group, particularly during that time because truly, truly about that, we made an impact, businesses in this community and it's just, it's a wonderful organization and we're going to continue to get the word out about it to businesses.
Well, thank you for being with us and I knew that you were serving in that regard. I wouldn't have put it at nine years. You could say like, you know, it goes by in a flash. We really do appreciate you. And then it's my understanding that your successor has already been. Do we do that? Did we already do that? We're doing that today.
Hopefully we'll do that today.
I'm a big fan of hers too. Lyndon, do you want to introduce yourself if you wouldn't mind?
I'm Lyndon Sheridan. I am much older, much wiser. Just kidding, actually. My partners were more than nine. I'm pretty much a servant community various ways. I appreciate the offer. It's something for Vic. I didn't realize it was a nine year sentence, but that's okay. It's all good. I really do appreciate the opportunity and hope I can add some benefit, lend some little perspective to the community.
On behalf of the county, the skill sets that you all have the ability to bring to that organization are really, really appreciated. I imagine there are some meetings where y'all are thinking about things and some of those RLF situations where you might understand exactly what the situation is a little better than I would or maybe some others. So.
Business community. That is such a blessing. It is such a need. I love the leadership of this community. Comes together and supports and the fabric of communities built by people like you.
Say more. Hey Vic, would you mind if we presented you with a little document of our appreciation?
I'm just offering policy.
Our guy will take a picture of it. I'll just keep a little distance.
Sure. One, two, three. One, two.
So coming up on our last meeting of the year here, it's just that time of year and we are fortunate to fortunate to get an opportunity at this end of the year to to recognize some folks that are I don't know if retiring is the right word or switching gears, but either way, we wanted to find a an opportunity in our meeting. I know we get to see some folks later this week to express our appreciation. I think I'm going to touch on Paul Martin here first. I started, I started the city council in 1995. And you might have been at sanitation already. Is that right?
Yeah, ninety seven.
You started in ninety seven?
Yes, but you were on council at that time.
Yeah, I was. And Paul and I, I mean, we, we just worked together really well. You know, we had a ability to effectively communicate with each other. And I was pleased to get to watch over the years as Paul got promoted and got promoted and got promoted. And next thing you know, he's doggone running the whole city, you know? Sort of mayor. I mean, I kind of know how it works though, you know? But I just, I always appreciated you. And then later, you know, when you got to be the service safety director and some of us are up here at the county, the level of cooperation and communication that has existed between our respective local governments, it just reached all time highs. And a professionalism and a courtesy and a caring for the people that we know we work for. Just wanted to say thank you. My colleagues probably want to say thank you as well. Commissioner Fitz.
Yeah. So I think the first time I started working with Paul is when he's working with the health departments. That's, yeah. And, and you know, one of the things I really appreciate is that no matter the situation, I feel like I can call Paul and get the real facts of the situation unvarnished. Sometimes I like to hear that and sometimes I don't, but it's always consistent. And that's, you know, when you know you can count on someone, that's a big deal. And I've always been able to count on Paul. So I appreciate all that you've done for the city of Lancaster and our county over the years. And I know you've got a little bit of time left, but I'm going to wish you great fortune in your retirement when that comes.
So Paul, you know, you and I are pretty good friends, right? And again, I've always had the ability to call you and talk about when I, when I see something going on in the city, you need to be aware of. And you're very appreciative when I do that. But also that property, we never got transferred from the light bank.
Singers are flying now, man.
I'm surprised. Can't wish for a fix.
I thought about it, Paul, but I thought now's not the time.
Now, Paul, you know, you know, I'm giving you, of course, but listen, we have a deep appreciation for you and I'm sure you're not retiring. You're probably going on to bigger, better things, I would imagine, knowing your skill set, who you are personally.
Thank you so much. I, you know, I lived in Pickering for years and Jeff knew about you being in city council and involved there. Just grateful for the opportunity to work for the city of Lancaster. But I really see how much of an advantage it is for us as a city and all our cities in our county, working with our county commissions. That's how we can move forward with bigger, better things. And I do appreciate all of the commissioners and those that work for the county and hopefully, and I really believe under our new mayor with Kerry Winnie back there, I think it'll continue. And appreciate the partnership that we've had. Commissioners have meant a lot. And I love to educate people about fairfield county government as well as city government. And so thank you for this time here today. We appreciate working with you and I'm staying here in town. Permanently. But yes, we appreciate what we follow and seeing how things progress in our wonderful county and city. Thank you.
Look forward to some more opportunities as the year concludes to share our appreciation for you and appreciate you being with us today. We also are honored to have the mayor of Lancaster with us this morning. I have some pretty vivid memories of your entry into politics. It was a very tumultuous time. It was a time where trust in our local government was not very high. And if I'm remembering our first conversation correctly, it was, well, I'm retired and I'll come in and I'll finish this term, but that's all I'm doing. Or something like that. And, and you just got the bug and you've got the heart and you moved this city further and faster, a shorter period of time than I had seen in my lifetime of many mayors. And I liked them all. I'm not being mean, but you just took that office and you took this city to places that I hadn't, I hadn't seen people do before. So from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for stabilizing a city in crisis and for taking it places that many of us thought we would never see again after nineteen eighty seven. So, thank you, Mayor. My colleagues may like to share their perspective as well. So, Eric, you know, I also have a deep appreciation of the good work you in. Just as Commissioner Davis has commented about how you moved this city forward, that is absolutely true. So I think the city of Lancaster is probably at the best point it's ever been in its history. And all thanks to you and of course, Paul and all your staff, because you can't do it alone, right? But again, my best wishes to you. You know, John Snyder and I were very good friends and you were one of his partners back in, back in the day. So I met you a long time ago and had an appreciation for you then, still do. Thank you.
So I was county party chairman when we went through a tough time in the city of Lancaster and Dave Scheffler graciously agreed to step into the breach and brought within the integrity of his past. And, and that's what we needed, right? The city needed someone with integrity to, to step up and be a leader. And, you know, the thing that's most impressive to me, all the things that these guys said, right? How Lancaster is in a great place and we've moved forward so much, but I've watched Dave Scheffler take leadership roles in the mid Ohio regional planning commission and the mayor's association. He's really put Lancaster on the map statewide and has done a great job of not only telling the story of our city here, but also advocating passionately for Lancaster and other cities around the state. And I don't know that we'll ever really truly be able to measure the significant positive impact that you've had, not only here in our community, but all around the state. So, thank you, David.
So I appreciate all the kind remarks. Of course, I, I believe that I was just the idea guy. And I had not only a great team and certainly Paul as chief operating officer of the city made a great difference in how me, I guess, the time to put some of those ideas into action. And certainly I had a great team. Our city employees are first rate. And I've said this many times, right after I became mayor, I got a frequent question, what's, what's your biggest surprise as mayor? And I, my biggest surprise is the quality of people, employees. They're caring, they're resourceful, they're creative, they're hardworking. And everybody has their stereotypical view of government employees and I didn't find that was the case. Folks I was working with. So Lancaster had all the potential in the world. We just had to free it up, I guess, in my mind. But I certainly wanted to return a compliment to the three of you because our working relationship with the county is outstanding. We three talk, or four, I guess, all the time. And we've had a number of meetings about many things. And certainly most recently about expanding the housing stock, which was a big problem in central Ohio in general. But many of you probably don't know, there are several instances in the state of Ohio where the county and the county seat are suing each other. So they're not speaking to each other, they're not talking, and that's not the relationship we have. And I expect that good relationship is going to continue. And you guys certainly deserve a lot of credit too, for what's happening in central Ohio and specifically in Fairfield County and Lancaster and moving it all forward. So appreciate all your remarks and I'm sure I'll be hanging around somewhere and maybe be light or thorn. How you guys look at it?
I look at it like we got two new potential board members for, for board openings.
You know, something you mentioned just gave me a little PTSD. City suing counties. Nineteen ninety eight, city of Lancaster versus Fairfield County went all the way to the highest Supreme Court. Our community has a history of some times when we weren't getting along. And it's been an honor to, to be another elected official at the same time as you and to get to work with you. I don't know if you're, how you're walking or what you're doing there, but would you be able and willing to come up for a picture with us? Yes, or we'd come to you, I guess. I'm being told.
No, I can get him.
Yes.
I have a lot of experience.
Paul, I'd like for you to join us if you would.
Three ones.
My wife always says, she just walks out and gets her kids in his truck.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Mayor has asked for permission to leave to run a city as if he needs my permission.
Thank you so much, Paul. Very kind.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Dave.
I already tried to get Paul to get one.
Eric?
Yes.
Do you have just one minute?
Of course I do.
So we are honored to be able to have that opportunity to thank those folks. But I also wanted to, I see you here and I appreciate you. And I just wanted to tell you how much we look forward to working with you. I, I know you and I go way back. I think first time I ever met you, you were out like playing with your kids in front of the Skyview drive-in. You were out there on that playground, Eric. I didn't even know you were. Yeah, that's been a little while, but, and then watching your career over the years has been a pleasure. And the city is very fortunate to have your skills and leadership coming into that position. And I just wanted you to know that we look forward very much to working with you.
Thank you.
I think it's interesting, sometimes when you go through a transition, you go from one end of the pendulum to the other. And when I look at the pendulum swing between Paul and Kerry, I have to say Kerry, you've got amazing hair.
I did tell Paul that we should do like a, like a Photoshop of a before and after kind of I feel like everybody in his position has lost their hair. So I'm like, we should just go ahead and put that out there now and do a picture of me right now and then Photoshop me bald. So we can see what I'm going to look like at the end of my career. So, but thank you.
I'm not going to add anything, I'm a bit of a self-believer. I know you have a lot on your plate today and I appreciate you taking a few minutes of your time to share in the celebration with us. Thank you, Kerry.
Well, thank you. And likewise, I look forward to continuing to work with all three of you in this new capacity. So, thank you. All right, I'm the mayor's bride. So if you don't mind, I'd like to be excused as well.
Yeah, of course. So continuing, and I appreciate the patience, folks who have joined us today, perhaps for other business, but we're, we're moving right along. One of the kind of quirks about state law is that county, when a new year begins, in this case, twenty twenty four, there's certain days that we're allowed to meet, we have to meet, we have to organize. It's kind of all set out by the higher vice code. We don't really get to decide those things. And so one of the things that's coming up soon, on January seventh, actually before we're permitted to reorganize and meet, is Real Estate Appraiser Appreciation Day on January seventh. And we will not be able to meet at that time or prior to that in twenty four. So we thought we would take an opportunity today to express our appreciation and recognize that day. And I thought perhaps county auditor, Dr. Brown would like to share a few words on that recognition.
Yes, thank you. Real estate appraisers are exceptional professionals who do a lot of work with the assessed valuation of the county, which is directly related to the resources the county has. In addition to that, we plan to recognize those in the private sector for which we have partnerships, particularly with the board of revision. So we are appreciative of being able to have the proclamation today because we will send copies of it to our partners in the private sector as well. Here today, we have others, Josh Hart, who are certified appraisers. In addition to Mr. Penny, who is in the private sector with Tyler Technologies, and also our support structure with Kayla and Crystal and Dave Fergai. And I think we'd all like to receive the proclamation once.
If you would, please join us and I'd like to give you whatever I got. So already. That's a little long. It's all the same.
Josh.
Don't give a smile, Dave.
One, two. One, two.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you for waiting.
Oh, yeah. I got you.
I'm a few bobcat fans.
Continuing with some business that we are happy to be working on today. As folks may know from some of our particularly more recent meetings, but it happens, I don't know, ten, twenty times a year where we get the good fortune to have somebody of very high quality who's willing to serve in, in, on one board or another board. And one of the openings that we have, I think it starts January first, is for a member of our law library. And we're thrilled to have with us today, Mr. Kreitz. How are you doing today, sir?
Very fine. Thank you.
There's a, a seat. If you'd like to come down, we'd like to share a few words with you, if you don't mind.
My confirmation here.
Yes, exactly. I want to talk about college. Well, we're, we're, as you probably know from just being in our community for a long time, our nine o'clock meeting is more of our review session, our work session. We talk about some things, then we go to our voting pattern following this session. So we have not officially passed the resolution yet. But you're a heavy, heavy favorite. And I thought maybe I'd give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself and your willingness to serve.
My name is Mike Kreitz. Moved back to the community in twenty nineteen. My wife was born and raised here. Playing against our high school graduate. I lived in Powell for a number of years and she wanted to come back home and one of those things, Steve, that she, she told me on a Friday night that she wanted to move back home at the same time she already had two or three houses picked up. Which we came back and it certainly has been one of the finest decisions in our lives together. I was raised in northwestern Ohio. In the Alamo, Ohio. And at one time, there were a lot of similarities between these two communities in terms of size and the relationship of April, it's of that nature. So it's been a wonderful experience for me. I just retired this year after forty-four years as a litigation partner with the National Law Enforcement Office. And found myself was in free time. And I think my wife was also encouraging me to. This is, this looks like a great opportunity. I was, I was raised in a family and educated at United States Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland, where service was everything. It was the cornerstone. And the saying in my family has always been, never stop serving. This is just a wonderful opportunity for me to be and serve the community, get back in a very small way, my appreciation for appreciate it very much. And I look forward to the opportunity to serve our community.
You know, prior to the three of us being commissioners, quite some time ago, actually now, it would be very common for the commission to receive resumes and simply scan the resumes and pick somebody and send them a note saying you win, you're on the board. And, and we didn't really take the time often to say hello to people that we were appointing to boards. I'm embarrassed to admit, I can remember a time when I couldn't even tell you who we appointed to what, because we didn't, we didn't treat this process with the respect that it deserves. And in that time, we wouldn't have gotten the opportunity to hear from you and say hello to you. And I'm thankful that we've learned how to do this a little better than we used to. And appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
My colleagues may have a question or a comment. I'm not certain, but I want to give them the opportunity. Okay?
So, Mr. Kreitz, thank you for your willingness to serve. And if you're, if you ever find yourself and your, or your wife letting you out of the house more often, we can find more opportunities for you.
That may happen, Mr. Commissioner.
Well, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Fitz.
So Commissioner Davis hit it on the head. We have great appreciation for people like you who have an area of expertise that, I know I don't, that are willing to serve. You know, we appoint to, I think, twenty-one different boards and commissions. And it's people like you that, that do the work voluntarily and And it's people like you that do the work voluntarily and on a volunteer basis and make good things happen all around our county. So just wanted to express my deep appreciation for your willingness to spend time on this.
And sure, just on our process, commissioners don't really have red cards or yellow cards. But by the same token, it's exceedingly rare for a resolution to make it onto our agenda. If any one commissioner is not feeling the support for that resolution, then staff and other people work for sometimes weeks or months to figure out what the problem is until they can circle back with something that, that we might support. So I can predict with a very, very high degree of accuracy the success of your resolution today. You're welcome to remain for the voting pattern. This meeting may, may go a little longer than some because of its end of the year nature. So you're, you're welcome to stay and you're certainly welcome to get on with your day in, in either way you choose on that. Please accept our sincere gratitude for your willingness to serve.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Commissioners.
Next, on our agenda, we are thrilled to have the Executive Director for the Buckeye Lake Region Corporation, Mike Fortitero. And you've been patient and kind. I always watch body language and facial expressions and I'm always thrilled when I see someone who's paying attention and engaged to what we're doing, even if it's not their specific topic. And so thank you for so far being a good audience member. And now perhaps sharing with us some of what your corporation is up to and how Fairfield County might benefit from some of the work you're doing, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. And you nailed my last name. So that's great. It's not a common last name. I am Mike Fortitero. I'm the Executive Director of the Buckeye Lake Region Corporation. Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity and good morning. The Buckeye Lake Region Corporation is a tri-county alliance of the governance around Buckeye Lake. As you know, we're split amongst three counties, four townships, but we drill that all the way down to even homeowners associations. My board is almost, it's almost 40 people, which is a lot. But it gives a representative voice to the issues around Buckeye Lake. The document that's going around the table right now is a compendium of projects, achievements, and goals of the Buckeye Lake Region Corporation and how they directly impact Fairfield County. And I'll wait till it goes on around. We've been in existence since September of 2017, Buckeye Lake Region Corporation has. And it was born out of a, well, when the dam process was going on and businesses were failing and nothing positive was really happening around the lake. The initiative was launched and we've been very, very successful in bringing resources to the Buckeye Lake area. I'll go through this list and whether you would like to ask a question when I bring up the topic or at the end, I'd be happy to address any of these topics. Going back to the genesis of the BLRC, we hired a DPZ of Miami to come in and do a design charrette of the region. And DPZ is probably one of the top 10 design firms in the world. It's very uncommon to have a company like that do a project in, in central Ohio. But it creates, created a vision, which sometimes it's easy to say, I don't want this or I don't want that. But what we really wanted to do was to create that vision, well, as we come into the holidays. Remember when you were a kid and the Sears catalog came and you marked all the pages? You knew you weren't getting all that. But it was really nice to imagine. So that's what we tried to do with, with the communities is to give them a chance to imagine really good things. We facilitated the state acquisition of the Thorn Township. Now Thorn Township is the far east end of the county, Perry County. The dredge material remediation area, where they pump the dredge material. That's a big deal around Buckeye Lake, because it's a heavily developed mineral mine. It's difficult to find places to pump dredge material. It's in Thorn Township, it's in Perry County, but it affects the quality of the lake overall. You know, the lake is an economic engine for northern Fairfield County. And that was a, that was an opportunity to find a piece of land big enough and with the right properties that they can dredge the whole eastern third of the lake. We have successfully applied for $400,000 in capital funds towards the initial restoration of the feeder channel. A feeder channel goes from Kirkersville to basically Leeds Island and just, you know, south or north of Millersport. And that $400,000, ODNR owns the channel. We were able to secure the funds. They're going to team it with what they hope will be a large grant from the capital budget and remediate the feeder channel. But the $400,000 that our organization was able to procure will be used to the Fairfield County end of that channel. That channel is the number one conduit for sediment and harmful algae growth to that side of Buckeye Lake. What happens is it was hand dug 150 years ago. It's never been maintained. It'll lay shallow, get warm, grow algae, then you have a rain event. It pushes pollutants and nutrients and nutrients and sediment into the lake. So that was something that we were really happy to be able to spark some remediation of that channel. We had the production and publication of a hospitality study and retail market analysis in the economic impact report to educate on the economic importance of the Buckeye Lake region. Those reports are available for anybody to use. All work product of the Buckeye Lake Region Corporation is on our website. We're a very transparent organization. We've been able to get state, state candidates to Buckeye Lake. We've had events with Mike DeWammer, Cor Dre, and Matt Dolan, Free to the Public, that we picked up the tab to produce. We're, we're a nonprofit. We can't, we can't be politically affiliated, but we can support the opportunity for the, the community to meet these candidates right, right at the lake. The dredge. So we had a dredge. It was around, built around 1969, 50 odd years ago. Very inefficient, couldn't buy parts for it. And we, with others, actively pursued the state to purchase a dredge and assign it to Buckeye Lake permanently. We were able to meet with the Speaker of the House privately. I even took him some of Dan Lovison's cookies. But which, maybe that's how we got the dredge, I don't know. But the dredge is phenomenal, because this thing is so powerful that it overwhelms the pools of the dredging material remediation area. And we had to stop pumping and build more pools, because this dredge is such a good piece of equipment. That, so when I talk about dredging, the legacy pollutants in the bottom of Buckeye Lake are really more, as much of an issue or more than any pollutants coming into the lake. We have really good agricultural partners that are doing best practices. But that legacy pollutant in the bottom of the lake is important to remove. And that's what the dredge does. Now the Miller Sport Canal. So we were able to secure a $425,000 grant for the initial restoration of the Miller Sport Canal. The Miller Sport Canal, the village actually owns the south bank and the bed of the canal. ODNR, of course, owns the water. If you look at it, the bank is secured with, I think they're called gadian baskets. And it's like a wire basket full of big rocks. They're rusting out, the banks are failing. And it's, you know, it's also adjacent to the street, Canal Drive, that it could undermine the road. So this is, this is a big project. And we would like to see it done in a manner that nobody has to even think about it for the next 75 years. So hopefully those state funds will be released. The paperwork's at the Office of Budget Management now. The 18th of December, we should know if they're being released. We can initiate the design and engineering work. Once there is a plan, then we can go after the actual state funds to complete the Miller Support Canal restoration. Queen of the Lake, that boat is docked at Leeds Island, Fairfield County, and is the tour boat for Buckeye Lake. We provided over $25,000 in direct donations to the restoration and there were many in-kind donations made through our organization to the restoration of that boat. We initiated the FEMA grant application to alleviate flooding on I-70. So I-70 down by Buckeye Lake, as you're all probably very aware, floods, floods and rainfall events, it's crazy. It's a legacy problem that's existed since the freeway was built. So I had sat through a presentation and learned that there was an opportunity for some federal dollars. We started the process, paid for the initial process, and then Fairfield County and Lincoln County came together and began to move it forward. And now Lincoln County State is to lead. And Lincoln County State in the portion of it that will fix the south fork of the Lincoln River, which is where the water goes. And ODOT is taking care of, between the ditches, figuring out what to do about I-70. That's a project, that cannon's been kicked down the road for 65 years. And how key is it to have a secure east-west freeway run right through the middle of the state, especially with all the development that's going on? Then one of the bigger things that happens at the lake is blast. We shoot the fireworks off from Fairfield Beach. It's the Independence Day celebration. We have assumed all duties for the production of blast, all fundraising for blast. And actually, my wife is the Chair of Blast now. So had to drag her into this, it's running on bandwidth. Focus groups. We've, we did a series of focus, and the reason I bring all these things up is like, the focus groups, these were people from all over the Buckeye Lake region. You know, there's no real credibility to a project unless you have community input. So we brought focus groups in and asked them, hey, projects under 150,000, something we can fund. What, what do you see as truly critical? And they pointed towards water quality. That's, that's pretty much, you know, that's, that's a given. So we worked with Buckeye Lake for Tomorrow. And we matched them dollar for dollar. The first $40,000 they raised, we helped with additional fundraising. They're, they're the experts. We raised the money. And a lot of aerators were placed in Buckeye Lake. Aerators are, some of the hoses, the hose, pumps air through it. You have bubbles going up, bubbles going down. Bubbles going down help with that legacy sludge at the bottom of the lake. It promotes decomposition. The bubbles going up introduces oxygen, fish love oxygen, because breathing's one of the top three. And algae hates oxygen. So the past few years, the water quality of Buckeye Lake has probably been better than it's ever been. And that was certainly a contributor. One of the things we do is provide design work to communities that are facing development pressures. So in Walnut Township, there was some property. Walnut Township is Fairfield County, the far northernmost township that's along the lake. We had a community meeting, a visioning meeting, again, it's easy to say what you don't want. But we encourage people to say what they would like to see if it is developed. And we brought world-class designers to the table to help Walnut Township see a vision of some of the things that are possible there. North Shore Park and Pier. This is actually in Lincoln County. But if, if anyone was to say, hey, I'm coming to Buckeye Lake, where should I go? It's kind of hard to send them anywhere except the bar. The North Shore Park would be at the location in the village of Buckeye Lake where the original amusement park was. It's ODNR and managed to stay on the property at this time. And it would continue to be so. Was about over $550,000 appropriated to the design and engineering work for a public park there. And we're looking to come up with the additional millions of dollars to build that park. Again, we work across the borders of all three counties, but Buckeye Lake is a shared economic engine that has benefit for all three. Crystal Lake. So we've had some grant applications. Hasn't been a lot of money, like $125,000 to begin the design and siting work there. But a crystal lake is a crystal clear water amenity of approximately six to eight acres, maybe whatever size you like. It's not a swimming pool. It's sustainable technology, uses very few chemicals to treat the water. We're currently beginning the engineering and design work on that. And the current thought is that it would be in the Fairfield County end of the lake. Community Improvement Corporation. So I was approached by property owners on the east end of the lake that if we were to create a community improvement corporation, they would give us access to a 2,400 foot long, 25 foot wide shoreline, which we could expand with cooperation from ODNR to 50 foot wide, basically a strip park. A Buckeye Lake version, almost of the Siota Mile, be the Buckeye Lake half mile. So we created a community improvement corporation. I come from a background in media and drag racing. That's why this is all a learning curve for me. But we created that and it's able to hold property. That was, it's one of the properties that we intend on holding first. But we also can help with the rehabilitation of delinquent properties that are maybe marooned in neighborhoods and are dragging neighborhoods down. They carry such a tax load that they they will, they will never be developed. They will sit vacant or derelict. I met with Fairfield County Executive Director of the Land Bank, Jim. We met at our office at Buckeye Lake. And I think we share a common goal and hopefully be able to work together in the future to, you guys have the whole county to work with as far as land bank and derelict properties. We would be able to assume the duties there around Fairfield Beach and in that area to help with and to share the, a vision. It would have to be a shared vision for that to be effective. We did regional community branding. Branding for a community or a region really builds a sense of identity and a sense of pride. And Commissioner Davis, I'm fixed. I give you the detail, Dave, you already got one. I had two on me. The Buckeye Lake brand that was made, that right there. So we put the offer out to communities and said, we would subsidize 90% of the cost of doing the same thing for a community. So right now, in fact, tomorrow night, we're going to wrap this up. Working with residents of Walnut Township and Fairfield Beach separately, logos for those two, logos and brands for those two communities and signage for the Fairfield Beach area. Something that can be a point of pride, something that And signage for the Fairfield Beach area, something that can be a point of pride, something that you know, they can point to as their own, you know, we see stickers that say ODX, well, it means the offer max, we all know that. I've never been there, I know that. Um we would like to see that same kind of uh recognition for the communities around the lake. Again, we're subsidizing ninety percent of the cost of creating this brand and logo for Walnut Township and Fairfield Beach. Um and finally, village and township relationship. So one of the keys to Buckeye Lake Region Corporation, as I mentioned, we have this um diverse um political background or political boundaries where you've got Terry, Lincoln, Fairfield and the townships and villages. And we have a Wednesday morning call every week. On that call, there is most frequently a commissioner from each of the three counties. And what is done is it's knocked down those boundaries, those walls, you'll hear uh commissioners speak to one another across the border saying, oh, you got that issue, hey, you know, perhaps we met and talked about it, we can figure this out, or hey, you know, we've dealt with that. Here's some avenues that you can pursue. You know, it it's amazing to see that cooperation and um it has been very uh gratifying. I don't, again, don't come from this political background. And it's gratifying, like I'm leaving here to go meet with some state reps, for them to say organizations like this don't generally exist where it's a common good sort of uh sort of um arrangement. So we're going to expand that next year, a key project next year is to bring the villages and townships together, much as we have the counties, they're already members of our board. But to create an actual separate standing meeting amongst the townships and villages so that they can draw on one another's expertise. We think that's really key as we're facing ongoing uh growth and development pressures around the lake. And we're not a development company, I mean, you've heard me talk about a couple of different parks. Those are public amenities, you know, we'll pursue that. We're not a development company, but we try to provide the resources to these communities that are facing development issues. And um in these small towns, townships, you know, a developer comes in and it it can be difficult and they can lean on us and we can find them expertise to help them make uh informed decisions on sustainable growth in the Buckeye Lake region, all three counties, so. That that that's my uh that's my little compendium of projects and certainly many more. And you can find uh lots of information at uh BLRCtwentythirty-six.org. Um on the website are all of our documents. And um I'd be happy to take any questions anyone may have or comments.
Sure, um as you have probably discerned over the years, um it's not uncommon for we commissioners to kind of develop lanes that we've kind of operated. And Commissioner Lovesease has taken the Buckeye Lake lane and uh we back his play. Uh but it's uh I think been uh really tremendous opportunity uh for the Buckeye Lake region to have a person of Commissioner Lovesease's stature and care for his community, for them to be represented in a way that they may never have been before in our county. And in light of that, I'm going to give Commissioner Lovesease uh the first opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments that he would like.
You know, I I don't have any questions other than uh everything we're doing is the Buckeye Lake Region Corpora- Corporation, I'm a absolute believer in, I uh you know, I've been, I've been in the area going on fifty-four years and this has been the first opportunity we've seen that brought everybody together. And sometimes when you have that opportunity, bring people together through a crisis or whatever the situation is, generally doesn't last, but this here lasts and consequently, I think it's going to be an effective uh vehicle for the improvement that's needed. And you know, in in the relationship we've developed between not only the community but with ODNR is tremendous. Matter of fact, when there's something going on now, ODNR calls us. And in the past, that was never the case. Matter of fact, they just kind of told us what they were doing, whether we agreed with it or not. And now that that whole uh that whole scenario has changed and I and a part of it's with your leadership. But uh we have some great people on that board that you know, very few boards have the opportunity of having, like Karen Meyer Stein, for instance, and he's been terrific. And has a vision that I'm lucky to have. You know, one of the things you mentioned that I'll be brief here of is about water quality, number one, number one issue for the lake, number one concern. In the last two or three years, we never had a alert of an algal bloom. And that has never happened. That was, that has never happened and and so we're we're attacking it and we're being affected then in the method we're using. So thank you, Mike, for being here.
Appreciate that, Dave, and uh thanks to Commissioner Lovesease for his constant support of our uh initiatives and for uh helping me make some very important connections. Uh like later today, I'm going to meet with uh additional House Representatives. You know, because of this relationship, I've spent time pursuing Buckeye Lake initiatives directly with the Lieutenant Governor uh in a in a closed-door meeting. Uh with the with the governor of the state of Ohio, Mike, why, you know, those sort of relationships never existed before this alliance and and Dave has been very instrumental in helping guide us that direction.
Thank you. I'll see if Commissioner Fix may have questions or comments.
Just a a quick comment, um you know, when you created the Buckeye Lake Regional Corporation, it was at a pretty dire time, right? People were um jumping ship and and you know, trying to get rid of their property at really low prices. And when you look at today, um you know, the same places that they were were getting rid of on the cheap are now, you know, worth a million dollars, right? Um and that's really the, you know, how you would measure um in part success of of your corporation and that people want to be there. So much so that the properties are valued at an extremely high rate. So uh congratulations for all the work that you've done and thank you for the effort. Um you and and Dave and in the board have uh you know, turned that around completely and it's a a big deal to Fairfield County as it is to the other counties, but it's a big deal here, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fix, uh I'll keep that in mind when I get my tax bill I live on.
There's no way I could live where I live now if uh if I wasn't already there. It has been dramatic around the lake, that is a fact.
So just a thought, you know, I I uh I'm I turned sixty um a couple of months ago. And I guess I'm not old enough to remember what some might refer to as the heyday on the lake, um but my mother and biological father, when they were alive, both told me stories of what the lake used to be like a long time ago. Rides and events, celebrations and um it sounded like a a really, really neat uh place. Um and I'm reminded a little bit of some of the conversation we had with Mayor Schefler earlier today. Um and the depths that Lancaster experienced in eighty-seven and eighty-eight, eighty-nine when Anchor Hocking pulled out. And um the recovery uh that Lancaster has experienced in the years since. And I feel like Buckeye Lake is is coming back. Maybe not to the fifties yet, um but in some ways even better. Uh there are some really neat places up there, some neat experiences up there now. Uh and uh I'm I'm just hopeful that that for me and others that get to enjoy it in the future, that we we never go back to kind of taking it for granted um as the gem uh in our county that that people get to experience. And on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I want to thank you and your organization uh for the role that you're playing and and trying to return that region uh to some form of its former glory.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um I I do work with Janet, this is Fairfield County, uh I'm actually on the board. And I'm the ex-chair of the Explore Lincoln County, so again, it's that that coalition thing, it's all working together.
In in prior life, you actually got to work with Rich, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Zabrak, yeah, back in the newspaper days. Uh it's just a small world, you know, I mean, really, when you look around, you know, I've 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 lived in Lincoln County essentially all my life, but I've spent lots of time in Fairfield County and last Saturday night, I was down here at the fundraiser and um beautiful old place here, uh beautiful fairgrounds and uh I'm glad to be a part of whatever I can here at Fairfield County, not only at the lake, but in the tourism side of things as well.
Thank you very much for taking your time to be with us today. Uh our meeting um is going a little longer than usual, which isn't terribly um unusual for a year-end uh meeting. And your patience and your courtesy with us today is very much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you all for your time. Uh if anybody ever comes up with a question about something that's going on around the lake, we're easy to find, my my phone number, my email's everywhere, just Buckeye Lake Region uh Corporation and things will come up that have my contact info, so thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, the commission is um going to turn to voters and taxpayers. If you would like to address the commission, please uh come to the podium if you're able and start with your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute rule today, uh given our heavy schedule and a number of items uh yet to come today of significant magnitude to the operation of the counties.
My name is Ray Sheeman, I think most of you know, but the visitors don't have that privilege, I guess. But I would like to start. Lord, we come before you this morning, thanking you for the privilege we have to live in this country, be a part of this community. And Lord, you have given us lots of people that want to do their part in making this community great. And I pray that in lieu of what is going on in Washington DC, that it does not hit this community like it's hitting other places right now. So Lord, be with the leaders, help them to make the right decision. And we come before you in peace and holy amen. I would like to comment, begin with, and now follow up.
Teens are more likely to be mentally healthy, you know I'm always talking about health. Um and after all, what's more important than health? And we can't function really as a government or as a family or in a community. Uh we can't have a job or anything else, we don't have health. And I don't think that's discussed very much here, but anyway. Uh teens are more likely to be mentally healthy if they have conservative parents, a study says, and liberal parents score the lowest. And they went on, they said the most important factor in mental health of adolescent children is the quality of the relationship with their parents. And the best results come from a warm, responsive and rule-bound disciplined parenting. Unfortunately, the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, has increased funding for diagnostic and psychiatric services. And they do not meet the challenge and they ignore what are likely to be the most important causes. Conservatives and very conservative parents are the most likely to adopt parenting practices and the most likely to effectively discipline their children. And I have to say, we the taxpayers have to ask just how much benefit is being realized from all the organizations and tax dollars associated with helping the children of America in Fairfield County. Also, a um Moderna stops the children's mRNA vaccine trial over heart damage, one one person. Now, I have to ask another question, one has to ask just why, if only one child has uh the cause of this vaccine being halted, then why on earth hasn't the death of many thousands been the cause to put a halt to COVID jabs? Horrible, um too horrible to believe is as the DHS whistleblower exposes Biden administration's sex trafficking of eighty-five thousand plus children in must-see testimony. And next, I have to ask again, and we have to ask just how much of this is and has been going on in Fairfield County. And the fourth thing is people who complied with COVID restrictions more likely to suffer mental health issues. This has been that study. And you know what else came out of that study? That civil rights were thrown on the garbage heap by the government in twenty twenty. And also, another thing they came out with was that outdoor physical exercise would have saved lives. Another thing that I would mention is prestigious science journals provide kill shot to bogus COVID narrative. The infection was higher and more often people said they were wore masks. So it seems that those COVID mandates, secondes, who were raising science-based questions about masks were attacked, they were censored, they were vilified and abused and actually were onto something. Uh this confirms that the masks largely were ineffective. And the last thing here is uh Mr. Young in New Zealand. He uh he was a whistleblower about ten million worldwide deaths because of COVID. After his whistleblower, whistleblower went viral, Young's home was raided by the authorities. He was arrested and also he's facing up to seven years in prison for going public. This only conformed, confirms its authenticity.
Growing the farming industry to advance globalism, global agenda. And it makes the case that uh tech giants are like gates, are pushing to take over control of the nation's food supply. And then, of course, Judy mentioned Young is a big uh whistleblower. And they're putting him in dire straits. And the other point that I want to make is who recommends now that China bring back the mask? And this is crazy because it does not do anything to benefit anyone.
Thank you.
We thank you all for being with us today. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Um my name is Jeff Williamson and I live at twelve oh one Ninety Old Drive in Baltimore. My subject for today is large solar facilities in our county. Last week, I sent the commissioners an email with the subject Greenfield Township Solar Exclusion Resolution, which was approved by my township by November twenty-ninth. I observed that it was on the agenda for your December fifth meeting, but that it was not discussed. I would like to add that Walnut Township also adopted a solar and wind exclusion resolution on November twenty-first, which was also on that agenda. In addition, in that email, I attached a copy of ORC three oh three dot five eight titled Restricted Area Resolution by County Commissioners. The code enumerates the steps required in adopting an exclusion resolution. I ask that you take this up as soon as possible because any activity that is initiated prior to approval of the resolution will not be bound by the resolution. Yesterday, I emailed all of you a copy of sworn testimony that Kara Sloan at her before the Ohio Power Sighting Board on behalf of Citizens Against Fountain Point LLC. the Ohio Power Siding Board on behalf of Citizens Against Fountain Point LLC, which is a planned industrial solar development. Her testimony was given on August 3 of this year. Included in her testimony are exhibits depicting the flooding and soil erosion associated with the existing carbon solar facility, which is built and is managed by Invenergy LLC. As it turned out, the OPSB decided that her testimony didn't count when considering the greater good of the community. To me, their message is that carpeting over prime farmland with toxic glass panels is better for us than preserving the farmland used to feed the community, the nation, and the world. Not to mention the impact to wildlife, especially large mammals, whose foraging and roaming habits are interrupted by chain link fences topped with razor wire. If you have any sense, you would have to disagree with that decision. This is an example of unelected bureaucrats telling us what's good for us. Speaking of, since you are elected officials of our county, why would you not listen to communities when they petition you for control of their own townships? Do you really think that we pass resolutions without any thought or discussion? Finally, I have heard on more than one occasion, the purpose of the new regional plan that you came up with is the preservation of farmland. I would be interested in hearing how hundreds, maybe even thousands of acres of solar panels achieves that goal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us, sir. Does anyone else who'd like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning, Sher. You're big. Sheri Hymer, got my address. I agree with the gentleman from Greenfield Township, Walnut Township, of course, as you know, presented a resolution to become an exclusionary zone for large solar and large wind fields. I took another trip over to Madison County and visited the Fox Squirrel Project. And I found out that what they're using over there is the, of course, they've got different types of solar panels because they keep being free. It's just, it's, well, the technology is such that a solar panel today will be obsolete, basically. And now they're using, what they're using over there is solar panels that have a higher wattage per panel. And what that does is that means that they use more of the metals in a more concentrated area of the panel, which means more possibility of leaching into the ground. If you talk to soil specialists and people that know about the leaching into the soil, the more metals you have in a more concentrated area means that you'll have more concentration per panel that leaches into the ground. These panels don't stay 100% effective or 100% efficient, really for very long. Every year that goes by, they degrade. And their efficiency degrades. And right now, in the state of Ohio, which I've mentioned before, is Ohio is only 12% to 15% efficiency rate with solar. And we need to save our farmland. And part of the farmland I know is going to be used for development. We have under lease right now is enough land for residences in the entire new land use plan. So I'm hoping that you will address Walnut Township. There is another township that's in the process of coming up with a resolution also to present to you. And I know that there are other townships that will be doing that in addition to Walnut and Greenfield. So I'm hoping that you do really look at that and come up with a resolution to make exclusionary zones. I know in the past that you don't want exclusionary zones. However, we, the people, are speaking. And I don't get up here to just hear myself talk because I don't like getting up here. But we need to become awake. This is happening all over the world. And I have a four-minute documentary type, it's on my phone and I'm not, I can't play it here, but I would like for you to see it because it's all documented and it's worldwide, not just the United States. And he was right. Bill Gates is not, he is the nation's largest farmland owner. And he states that he is, he wants to make the farmland more productive. But that is very misleading because to him, more productive means solar. Because 6,000 of the 9,000 acres that he owns in Ohio is going to solar.
Thank you, Sher. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning, everybody. Nick Bundren with the Ohio Land and Liberty Coalition. And you know, while many of us see this debate as just about land use or view sheds or solar panels, it's, this encompasses property rights. I've talked previously in the past couple of months about this, but today I'll be outlining just why our property rights are some of the most important rights that we have here in this nation. So property rights guarantee freedom because we, the people, control the production of our land. It's not how it is in a lot of other countries. If you look at Germany, Russia, et cetera, the government controls the lands particularly for energy development, and the people don't have a say. When governments restrict the ability for people to develop their land, only a few people get to decide what to produce, how much to produce, and how much. Instead, we in America have the right to do what we want with our property, no matter what our neighbors say, no matter if any government tries to restrict that, we have the right. And that right supersedes local government. We're a nation of innovators. We're constantly pushing the boundaries of what is possible. It's what makes us different from the rest of the countries. This innovation has led to our unparalleled success. It would not have been possible without the assurance that what we do on our property is only our business and none of the government's business. You see, this property, these property rights give us power. These rights are eroded or restricted. Our opportunity for prosperity is restricted as well. That's a direct threat to our freedom. And the restriction of something like solar or wind development is an example of the government restricting our freedom bit by bit. Once these rights go, they're not coming back. We give them an inch, they're going to take a mile. It's not just going to end with solar panels. We live in a nation where our success is only determined, or it's only limited by how much we want it. And we can't allow the government to determine that. Countless people have fought for these rights. We enjoy them. We shouldn't let them go to waste because a couple of people don't like the views from their living room window. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? So as folks who have attended our meetings for a long time know, when voters and taxpayers address us, we treat that as a time for us to listen. We do not treat that as a time for us to debate or argue or do point, counterpoint with folks who bring us particular points of view. I would hope that you would take that with the respect that it's intended. I have been to meetings in many places around this state and many others where that level of respect is not shown to people who come before their local government with varying opinions, many of which I disagree with. But that's, that's where we live. That's who we are. That's how we treat people who come to us with, in some cases, as we've seen this morning, varying points of view, some not all in agreement. But in spite of that reticence that we have to argue or debate or create friction with people who bring us their points of view, I would like to just take a moment and share some thoughts that folks may or may not be aware of. The commission is engaged with legal counsel on a variety of issues right now, particularly as it relates to land use and some of the subjects that have been raised this morning. Not all of the townships that are concerned about these issues are facing the same legal questions. There are townships that are in a better position, if you will, to make this case. And there are townships that are potentially compromised by events that have previously transpired in having these discussions. And we are continuing to observe the conduct of the Ohio Supreme Court, the Ohio Power Siding Board, and listening to counsel that we're receiving regarding how Senate Bill 52 is being construed and how it's operating. We've also engaged environmental scientists to educate us. We are keenly aware that there are studies and opinions from all directions. And we are trying not to merely accept information that we receive because somebody's name has letters after it. We're trying to get our own independent analysis of the information that we're receiving that we're paying for, not that one side or the other of this argument is paying for. So we're doing that. I think another piece of information that may be helpful is there, there's been quite a bit of tumult in recent years with an entity called PJM. And with PJM, there are projects in the queue, and then there are projects that are not in the queue, so to speak. And I'm boiling this down to, it's like lowest common denominator here. So please forgive me for not taking an hour to explain that. But what it means to me is that the projects you've heard about, the projects that you're currently worried about, are very, very likely to be the only projects in my lifetime in this county. That's what I think the situation at PJM means. That being said, I think that this commission is very concerned about farmland preservation, about food production, about protecting the largest industry in this county, which is agriculture. And we're struggling with you. We are not struggling against you. By the same token, when we make decisions and when we lead on these issues, we are doing everything we can to lead in a way that can sustain the attacks that we will endure from either side. So I don't want you all to leave here with some impression that would be inaccurate, that we're not listening, that we're not paying attention, that we're not doing our homework. That's not what's happening here. So I appreciate your courtesy and your patience with us as we try to navigate what I believe as a former lawyer for 30 years in land use and development is a very, very perilous path. And we will do everything we can to lead the county through that in a way that protects the voters and taxpayers of this county. I'm not arguing with you folks. I'm not being mean. I'm not trying to duck or dodge. I'm trying to be as candid and transparent with you as I can be. I appreciate your time and your courtesy hearing me out on that. Update on legal. Administration update.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to start by just thanking the prosecutor's office, specifically Amy Brown Thompson. She was here well into the evening with Rochelle and I working on a matter and appreciate her commitment to that. And maybe the two of you got pulled into that as well. Appreciate you too. Bennett, we have a couple graphics maybe to throw up. So I think it's been maybe a decade in the making that we have a new phone system coming to the county. So having a little fun with this, but I think, Dan, you were the third item to champion this ongoing project. But today, we will all fully be on the new phone system. And thank you and the rest of the team and everybody in the county. I know it's been some pain points for everybody to make this transition. But Dan in the call center there, thank you, Dan, and your team. Anything you want to say? I think 11 o'clock is the cutover.
Yeah, we're 33 minutes away at cutover time. It has been a while in the making. And I mentioned it in the email this morning, thanks to those department needs or office needs that have participated on the project. And thanks to our vendor partner, ATC, they've been with us for the ride, at least, you know, for the project in the last year.
Thank you, Dan.
Can we get copies of those slides?
Yes. Had to poke a little fun there. Great announcement. Lieutenant Governor John Huestead had announced that 26 workforce partnerships were receiving $5 million in awards from the industry sector partnership grant. This does help support collaborations that are bringing Ohioans into the workforce pipeline while meeting the needs of job creators and the local economy. And that should bring to mind our workforce center. So three would be a 33 alliance. They were awarded $120,000 for this grant program. And those funds will go towards supporting the career navigators who serve more than 200 students in our high schools throughout the county. So thank you, Rick, and to those that help support and advocate for that grant. Anything you want to add?
Just a great effort. I think we had like 12 letters of support from businesses and education entities in the community and Bailey and Adam. He used to be there. Teamwork really hard on helping pull this grant together. So it's a big win. It's, most of the industry sector partnerships are like Central Army Manufacturing Partnership and things like this. Ours is unique as it serves multiple entities. And I know Commissioner Love, seeing Commissioner and Michael Litten, who both serve on the workforce for the state, have advocated for us. So thank you very much.
Good work, everyone. So getting to just some housekeeping issues where after the beginning of the year, we will have on January 9 during the review and regular meeting, a hearing to determine the establishment that the Violet Township New Community Authority is conducive to the public's health, safety, convenience, and welfare. The reorganization meeting of the commission will be January 8 at 9:00 AM with the regular meeting to be held on January 9, the following day at 9:00 AM. We also have the records commission that will be reorganizing, and that is scheduled for January 9 at 8:30. And then their first meeting will follow the reorganization meeting at 8:40 that morning. And the president of the commission does serve on the records commission. Highlights of resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. And with it being the last meeting of the year, we have a bumper crop of 44 resolutions. A few of note here, we already did the proclamations for Mayor Shuffler and Service Safety Director Paul Martin, as well as the Real Estate Appraiser Appreciation Day recognition. We also have a resolution authorizing the signing of a contingent purchase agreement for our property on Sheridan Drive and Lancaster. Want to touch on that, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, we'll touch on that. We have had some executive sessions and some staff has been in communication with some owners of a building called the Colonnade out on Sheridan Drive. The list price or asking price of that building, the math really didn't work for us. And when I say that, when we look at potentially building or acquiring buildings, we try to we try to do a reasonably sophisticated ROI analysis on that. Specifically in many cases, and in the interest of time, I won't go through them all today. But if you see the county purchasing buildings or building buildings, what's happening behind the scenes on that is we're alleviating rents. The county over the last 30 or 40 years got into a reasonably extreme habit of renting facilities, whether that's for storage or operations or a variety of different purposes. We've rented, we've rented, we've rented, we've rented. And in return for that rent, we've done nothing but continued to pay rent. And so over the last 13 years at least, we have set about a pattern of trying to reduce those rents. Sometimes at some cost, of course, but over a longer horizon, owning buildings and resolving debt is healthy for the long-term fiscal policy of the county. If we can find situations now where we can invest in purchasing buildings and reducing rents, what happens in our out-year forecasts is that our costs go down. And so we're, we're continuing to look to achieve those types of goals. In this particular situation, the initial numbers that we looked at did not provide for what we would determine to be an acceptable ROI. What we mean by that is if we have cash sitting with the investment committee that is being invested currently at rates four, five, sometimes north of 5%, then we should be careful about taking cash that's earning that kind of return and using it for something that's not earning that kind of return. And so it was in that regard that we, we slowed down in, in looking at this particular building. Then our legislators at the state and consultants that we work with made us aware of some upcoming capital access that could dramatically change that equation if the state were to help in the acquisition of this particular building. And so what we think could happen is if the state were helpful and the price were right with that assistance, we could potentially significantly reduce out-year rents and achieve an ROI in excess of what we're currently able to achieve with our other investments. So one of the resolutions on today is a resolution to enter into a purchase contract for the Colonnade Building out on Sheridan Drive with very significant contingencies in the purchase contract. Most notably, the entire transaction is contingent upon help from the state of Ohio. If we don't get that help, we can't achieve the ROI that we demand in the analysis that we do in the acquisition of buildings. So the sellers are keenly aware of that very dramatic contingency and have already executed the purchase agreement. And I expect, following our formal voting pattern today, the commission will vote to enter into that purchase agreement with a significant lead time and significant contingencies, most specifically help from the state of Ohio. So I'm taking a moment to explain that because it's a multi-million dollar decision. Our resolutions sometimes go down to a nickel. They used to. And, and we do those too. But every once in a while, we have a decision of some magnitude and weight involving potentially several million. In this case, I believe the purchase agreement is for approximately $3.6 million. I believe the contingency requires a minimum of $600,000 from the state of Ohio. Over the past several months, as we, as we've been analyzing this potential acquisition, the purchase price was much higher. There was no accounting for potential help from the state, and the math was inescapably not appropriate for us. Through lots of discussions with lots of different entities and legislators, there is a, a sliver of a window of a possibility that we could get there. And so we're trying. I apologize for the lengthy explanation, but I hope you understand that we feel it's incumbent upon us to fully and adequately explain multi-million dollar decisions that we make. And I'm gonna see if my colleagues have perhaps additional questions or comments regarding that particular resolution. And I'll turn first to Commissioner Fix, because he's laughing at me.
I think you've successfully sucked all the oxygen out of the room on this topic, so I'll defer. Actually, you did a great job explaining
You did.
why we're doing what we're doing and the logic behind it. And I fully support it and appreciate your somewhat lengthy explanation. I'm just giving you a little time.
That's all right. That's all right. Please continue on.
Thank you.
Good job.
Nine resolutions for board appointments. We will be reappointing Michael Kaper, who was here. He must have stepped out. I'm pointing to the back there. Did you scare him off?
The sheriff stepped you out.
As well as John Coaches to the Airport Board. A vacancy does still exist on this board due to the resignation of long, longtime member Bill McNear, who I think Commissioner Levesey was there to recognize Mr. McNear for his over 20 years of service. We are seeking applicants who have some aeronautical experience to complete that board composition. We do have three resolutions for new board appointments. Mike Kreitz, who you met earlier today, to the Law Library. Jared Collins to the Peace Officers Board. And then also Linda Sheridan, who was here earlier, to the revolving loan fund board. We have five resolutions for board reappointments. Cory Clark and Donna Foxmore to the Meals on Wheels Board. Scott Urban, or Chief Urban, I should say, to the Peace Officers Board. Mary Snyder to the revolving loan fund board. And Jennifer Morgan to the Regional Planning Commission. And just, you know, a recognition for the outstanding work that Jennifer has done this year.
And just a couple of quick comments. We do actually have someone who's interested in the Airport Board who has both military and private pilots' experience. And we're working on getting that application completed in. And while we're talking about Jennifer Morgan, I just want to publicly state my deep appreciation for her leadership on that board. I'm sure you had no idea when she accepted the role as chairman that she would be going through not only a transition in leadership, but a, a complete changeover of pretty much a vast majority of the staff, as well as the land use plan and the tour that were going on. And she's really stepped up, really, you know, seen her grow tremendously over the, you know, past two or three years. And really appreciate her leadership and I look forward to her continued service on the, on the board.
I was glad she was willing to re-up. And then lastly, Jeff Beard is a reappointment to the Visitor Threat and Benjou Bureau Board. We do have resolutions to establish new funds, one for the Ohio Department of Development Grant Funds for the Fossil Western Project, redevelopment tactical project. Resolution, wait, let me pause on that. Jeremiah, you guys want to add to that one?
The intergovernmental agreement, it's basically, we've got a lot of different funding sources and different things, different partners here between the City of Kenau Winchester by the township.
That's my next one. This one was establishing the new funds. Anything on that?
I'd just like to add, I really appreciate the, the support, the help we've gotten from the Auditor's Office and also from Bart and Stacy in the Commissioner's Office. We have funding monies coming in and monies coming in from various other avenues. And a lot of that stuff has to, has to be tracked and spent in accordance with the law and, and certain regulations. And it gets, it gets outside of my wheelhouse pretty far. It's not building a road or a bridge or something like that. So having that help and that support, knowing I've got somebody that I trust that, that can steer us in the right direction is wonderful.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kerry, and to your team as well. Now, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Kenau Winchester, Violet Township, Kibum County, to finance, construct, reconstruct, improve, alter, maintain, repair, operate transportation projects. Anything on that?
No, I mean, this is a long time coming, getting this agreement together. And it's really exciting that responsibilities for everybody and that everybody's going to be chipping in to get this important project done, so.
See if I may, real quick. And so as we're doing our tour of all the townships and villages, we often point to this agreement as an example of what can be done when governments sit around a table and figure out how everybody can get most of what they want. Nobody comes out of it with everything they want, but working cooperatively, we're able to have development pay for the infrastructure. And we're able to, you know, further protect the taxpayers by having, you know, this development provide income tax to both Violet Township and Kenau Winchester, and they're supporting the bricklayer and local schools. So this is a truly a great example of how it can be done well. And, you know, it's, it's good to share that as we're going around the county because, you know, we talk about preserving land, we talk about protecting the taxpayers. This is an example of, of doing that. So really appreciate all the efforts, Rick and Jeremiah, and all the other folks who are involved have put into it.
Great. We also have eight resolutions to clear necessity of the establishment altering widening, straightening, vacating, or changing of a public road path or culvert. And this is the outcome of the viewings you all had a couple of weeks, weeks ago, as well as the public hearings. Anything else to add on that, Jeremiah?
Just anytime we do a project, whether it's something new or replacement or something like that, if there's, if there's any possibility we may need to get additional right of way for that project to proceed, then that's one of the things that hitches us to have a viewing and hearing. So we kind of lump them together as we did, and we, we went out. Now we got a whole list of them to finalize. And then it's all my ballpark. We'll get out there, we'll get them replaced, or we'll get them bid out, have a contractor place to make sure they go in right.
We're doing this in September next year, is that right?
We will not be doing it in November. I know that.
So when I first became a commissioner, we used to do this occasionally. And we would try to do it eight o'clock in the morning and try to be back here by nine. Generally, that was impossible, but we never did in November.
I apologize.
It's all good.
Message received, right, Jeremiah? Message received, right? And lastly, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to sign an agreement for the replacement of the HVAC units at the Workforce Center. Bart, do you have any budget review?
No updates this week.
Okay. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Calendar and correspondence items are listed on the agenda, which are available on the website and in hard copy form. I would like to, however, note that Roman numeral number four under calendar items, the Richland Township and Village Rushville Combined Land Use Plan Meeting is actually December 13th. It's, there is a typo on the agenda.
Okay, Rochelle. So I have, Commissioner.
Well, under Old Business, there was an article out a couple of days ago. I'd be bragging about how healthy I am. And I'm glad I was able to come today and demonstrate that for you all. Commissioner Levesey, under Old Business.
So last week, Commissioner Fix and I were able to attend a Chamber of Commerce 33 Development Economic Update, and I thought that was great. I, it was a lot of good information there and was happy to attend. And the turnout was also good.
Thank you, Commissioner Fix, under Old Business.
Yeah, so last week, we got to visit with Miller's Port and Stoutsville. Both were really positive meetings about a land use plan and, and kind of things that each of those entities need to do and we need to work with them on to, to move forward. So we have a tremendous amount of positive momentum going on there. Commissioner Levesey, you mentioned the Route 33 lines. Kenny McDonald was kind of one of the keynote speakers there. As you know, he's the big shot in the development committee in Columbus and deserves much of the credit for all the great things that have gone on in Columbus in the past 10 years. Had an opportunity there in that day to, I was participating in the County Commission Association of Ohio winner conference. One of the speakers there is an old friend of mine who pulled me aside after his presentation and mentioned how he had just had lunch with Mr. McDonald and how Kenny was bragging about Fairfield County and all the great things that are going on here. So to me, when someone who is that well-regarded and well-respected goes out of his way, you know, without solicitation to speak positively about everything that's going on here, that's a big deal to me. And I, I was really pleased to hear that the word is getting out that Fairfield County is moving in the right direction, not just on the housing plan, but in our, the way we're approaching development in general is, is being well-regarded. So that was a big deal. I also, unfortunately, in that same CCO conference, we had a central region meeting. And I volunteered that we would be happy to host the 12 or 13 counties that comprise the central region at our Workforce Development Center sometime next spring. So look forward to working with Ani and Rick and their teams on putting that together.
Thank you. Under New Business, kidding aside, if this were an August meeting, I wouldn't be here. My colleagues would handle the meeting just fine. But I'm a little bit nostalgic about this meeting today as I conclude my 13th year as a county commissioner, seventh year as president. And to future commissioners, I would say, if you want to be president seven times out of 13 years, you need to pout, and cry, beg your colleagues to please let you be president. And then eventually they give in and let you do that a disproportionate amount of times. But, right? I mean.
Yes, that's not going to work anymore. Go ahead.
But anyway.
I'm stupid, Steve. You can talk tonight. It's, it is truly an honor to be able to work with these guys and, and all of the folks that we get the great privilege to work with. So I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation for the privilege. And I, I hope, not necessarily as president, but as commissioner, I hope I get to continue this, with this honor for some time to come. I treat it with a very, very high degree of respect. Commissioner Levesey, under New Business. So next Saturday, Commissioner Fix, myself, and Commissioner Davis will be at Kroger's out on Memorial Drive, asking for money for the red kettle. And it kind of reminds me of, I had an opportunity years ago to listen to Art Lang's letter speak. And those who don't know it, he, his father was a traveling Baptist preacher. And he talked, he talked about, his father would say during the offering time, "Well, you know, now we're going to do a wave offering." Now, that's, that's an Old Testament thing, where they referred to something, food or whatever, grain, I think. And he said, "We're going to do a wave offering, so take whatever you're going to give and hold it above your head and wave it back and forth." And he said, "By the way, change doesn't wave." So therefore, when you come, please come out and please give generously to the, the red kettle. It's, it's a big deal. Salvation Army does such good work, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fix, under New Business.
Yeah, so we've got another busy week this week. We have a Transportation Improvement District meeting this afternoon. I'm looking forward to hearing the updates on all the significant transportation projects that we've got going on. Tonight, we're in Lithopolis. Safa is here from Regional Planning. I wanted to give her a shout out because she lives, I think, north of Dublin and comes out to all parts of the county two or three nights a week and offers support from Regional a week and offers support for regional planning. So Safa, thank you for all you're doing with that. And we have Richland and Rushville tomorrow night, have a One Ohio Recovery Foundation Board meeting. We are going to circle back with the Farm Bureau later this week to further discuss the land use plan. That meeting got kind of hijacked, so their executive board is coming in here to meet with me and Ani to talk about that. We have Salvation Army, as Dave mentioned, on Saturday, and looking forward to seeing all the folks come out waving their $5 and $10 bills.
Thank you, Commissioner. As we lean towards our voting pattern, I wanted to take a moment to express the commission's sincere appreciation to the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. I hope you'll share with the men and women of your department how much we appreciate you, y'all, about security for our meetings, which is such a small part of what you do, but so much appreciated by us. And I know 99% of the people that come to our meetings appreciate seeing y'all here. Just want, want to say thank you, sir. And then I wanted to mention to you, Safa, I mentioned earlier that I pay a little bit of attention to body language, facial expressions, intonation. It's really nice to have you as a member of our audience, because you're, you're paying attention, and I can tell that you're listening and caring about what's going on here. And that's a pleasure for us to see. Thank you.
So usually at our, you know, tour, Safa's the one who writes down every word that every person says throughout the evening. I'm surprised that she hasn't done that today, but she does take meticulous notes.
We appreciate you being with us today. I'm also thrilled to see the array of countywide elected officials that we have with us today. I'm not meaning to put pressure on you folks to come to our meetings, because I know there are times when you have other pressing business that is needing your attention as opposed to being at our meetings. But when I see you all lined up and being in our meeting, it gives me comfort. It gives me confidence, and I sincerely appreciate it when we demonstrate this kind of cooperation and concern for the operation of the county. And I just really, from the bottom of my heart, I really do appreciate it when, when you folks have the opportunity and the time to be with us today. In that spirit, I'm going to see if County Treasurer Jim Bonson has any information that you'd like to share with the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Last Friday, Michael Kaper and Belinda Nebregall and I were in Mansfield for the fourth quarter get-together of county land banks. There are now 66 Indian counties that have land banks. We have presentations from representatives from the Ohio Department of Development, who is then in turn working on the new grants for brownfields and also demolition. And as the land bank, we continue to work on our applications to meet all the deadlines and to get as much money possible for Fairfield County. A couple of other quick notes. Dave Scheffler, what a great mayor he has been. I got the privilege of meeting him when he first moved to town, worked with him on various professional basis. Also, I've spent many hours with him on bicycles riding the fine county roads of Fairfield County. I always check with Jeremy, Jeremiah, on which roads have been recently tarred and chipped, chipped and sealed, so we could avoid those roads. Also, finally, I'm at the end of my two weeks of head cold, chest cold. Commissioner Davis, this too will pass. Look forward to that.
We are getting, getting notes that I'm delaying this meeting too much because of our holiday celebration that we're anxious to participate in shortly. But I'm never going to overlook Lisa. How you doing?
Good, thank you. I just want to say real briefly that we had the opportunity to have our Fiddler user group meeting held here. We had several county recorders and their staff attend last Wednesday. It was a very productive meeting, and we have some very exciting things on the horizon to not only assist our employees, but to assist our title folks and our local attorneys who work in our office regularly or work from their office with our office regularly to make that an even stronger bond. So we're looking forward to those things. Fiddler is a company that's always looking out for the forefront of the future and how things are going to be moving along, and they take all of our input and input of the folks around us into consideration to make sure that we are at the top of our game in protecting our customers and providing them with the best opportunities through recent records.
Thank you for being with us today. Jeremiah, anything further?
Well, we've already touched on a lot of the culvert roadway projects that we're working on, and especially the Basel Western project. And again, I just wanted to send my appreciation to the Auditor's Office and the Commissioners Office for the, this group help.
Thank you. Appreciate you being with us today.
Brandon Meyer, how you doing?
Morning. Clerk of Courts Association had a winter conference last week. We had 11 new clerks, and between now and when our new term starts a year from now, we will have 21 more new clerks. That's 34-ish new clerks in the year, which is a lot.
Thanks for being with us today. Dr. Brandon, good morning.
Similarly, there are new auditors all throughout the state, and I previously reported we're going to hold a leadership conference at the Fairfield Center, but through this past week, the interest has grown so much that we're now going to hold it at the Wigwam. So I want to say thank you to Violet Township for being so collaborative with us in order to change that location for early February. We're getting our new weights and measures vehicle this week. We're so excited about that. It's been on backorder for the better part of the year. And so we're very excited to finally have that arrive, and thank you for your support of that in the 2023 budget. Want to say thank you to the staff for the great deal of flexibility they're showing in terms of, you know, making the deadline soft deadlines so that we can get through the year in in a good way for everybody. House Bill 187 passed the Senate, but it is not the same House Bill 87 that we remember from what we discussed. The only thing that's similar is that it has a three-year sunset. Previously, it was addressing the variable evaluation. Now it addresses homestead, which we do support as the improvements in homestead, and it does have a three-year sunset. That'll go back to the House and then on to the governor. I do also want to point out that the mayor is continuing to serve on destination downtown Lancaster. Appreciate his continued involvement with that. And then tonight, after that meeting, I'm going to go to the library to read the Polar Express to kids. And then after that, just hope that everybody can go out and see the advent windows. There was a picture in last week's review packet from last year, and this year it's even more impressive, and there's been a lot of very positive comments about the windows.
Thank you. And in concluding this section of our meeting today, I wanted to express on behalf of my colleagues, our appreciation to all of our department heads and leaders in the community. I'm not going to extend this meeting with a lot of additional things right now, but please know that we know that we don't, we don't get to enjoy the privilege of serving and having things go as well as they do without you folks for another fantastic year of service. We thank you all very much. Monsieur Levacy is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
I have one announcement. Resolution 2023-12.12.s has an incorrect title. On the agenda only. The resolution itself is correct. Instead of prosecutor, it should be sheriff. That is it.
Thank you. I'm moving to the approval minutes for December 5, 2023.
Same move.
Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0 from the Commissioner. Resolution 2023-12.12.a, a resolution approving the approval proclamations.
The Commissioners, I move items A through T.
Second discussion. Won't let the meeting any further other than reincorporating my remarks regarding purchase, tell them a further discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas. Resolution 2023-12.12.u, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in major object expenses categories.
Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, I move items U and V.
Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Domestic Relations Court, resolution 2023-12.12.w, resolution authorizing account-to-account transfer for the adjustment personal services.
Same move.
Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From the Fairfield County Engineer, resolution 2023-12.12.x, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement.
Fairfield County Engineer, I move items X through double F.
Second discussion. During my week, continue to appreciate the way you and your office goes above and beyond the call of duty. Further discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Facilities, resolution 2023-12.12.gg, a resolution authorizing the county administrator's signed agreement for the replacement of the HVAC units at the workforce center with Amerisk.
Same move.
Second discussion.
It will be on order. They won't come in for about 26 weeks.
So they're going to be really efficient.
They will be.
Yes. Further discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, resolution 2023-12.12.hh, a resolution authorizing the approval of partial repayment of an advance to the general fund from Fund 7521.
Same move.
Second discussion.
Appreciate Josh and his team being attentive to the repayments of advances for council.
Further discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, resolution 12.12.i, resolution authorizing the approval to extend the repayment date of an advance of funds.
Same move.
Fund 72.
Same move.
Second discussion.
And then he extends repayment at this one.
Big honor, our reimbursement from the grantor.
Just giving you a hard time, Josh. Thank you.
Come on, man.
Trying.
Further discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, resolution 2023-12.12.jg, a resolution authorizing the approval of a contract binding between Fairfield County Probate Court and the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board of Fairfield County.
Under Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items JJ through OO.
Second discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, resolution 2023-12.12.pp, a resolution to appropriate for unappropriated major expenditure object category Sheriff's Office Fund 2503, Police Revolving.
Same move.
Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Utilities, resolution 2023-12.12.qq, a resolution to approve the contract award for the Picket Green Refugee Road Water Main Improvement Project, Utilities Fund 5046.
Same move.
Second discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Payment of Bills, resolution 2023-12.12.R, a resolution authorizing approval of payment of bonuses, commissioners approval.
Same moves.
Second. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The 2024 Reorganization Meeting will be held January 8th at 9:00 a.m.
So. In all likelihood, this will be the final meeting for the Board of Commissioners for 2023. As folks know, any one commissioner can request and receive a special meeting if business of the county requires, as we lean towards the end of the year. That would be unusual, but it could happen. And the absence of a special meeting request will return in January and look forward to a new year. On behalf of my colleagues, I hope y'all get to spend some time with your family and friends for this holiday season. I hope you get to have a safe and happy New Year's Eve, and we all look very much forward to continuing to work with you as the new year turns. I accept the motion.
I just wanted to say, because I know I'm standing between everybody and pizza, and that's not a very good place to be, but I want to echo your sentiments about what an honor it is to serve with the two of you. We had a great year this year. I look forward to another one next year, and deep appreciation for the elected officials we serve with and our incredible staff. So I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year.
And I'm going to delay that also. Thank you, Commissioner Fix. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. And, you know, for all your hard work on, there've been all the endeavors that you've taken on, especially for your leadership this year, being president. Thank you. Wish I could do half as good a job as you do. I appreciate both of you guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion to adjourn in a second, although, Fair, machine five, say, and I?
I.
Oh, same time. Motion carries. The commission is adjourned. Thank you all very much for an excellent year.